The county's Office of Technology and Innovation. I'll be playing the role of technology moderator for today's virtual meeting. On the panel with me is Don Crowell from the county attorney's office who will be serving as process moderator. Before we start the meeting, let's do a quick roll call and make sure that we've got communications. And today we'll start with Commissioner Eggers.
Good morning or good afternoon, Brian. I'm here.
Good afternoon, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Seal.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Commissioner Welch.
Afternoon, Brian.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Long? You're muted, Commissioner Long.
Hey there, I'm here, Brian.
All right, good to see you. Commissioner Justice.
Hi, Brian.
Good afternoon. Commissioner Peters.
Good afternoon, Brian.
And then Commissioner Gerard.
Afternoon, everyone.
All right.
This is our regular November 10th meeting of the county commission. Our first item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. So, Brian, what have we?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on anything related to the agenda, or really anything at all, go ahead and hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, it appears we have six members of the public that wish to be heard. We'll start with our first member of the public, Don Bowler. Don, if you'll go ahead and unmute and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, good afternoon. My name's Don Bowler. B is in boy, O H L E R. I live in St. Petersburg. Last week, when the counties without mask mandates and our population density was brought up, I started thinking. So I created a hypothetical projection of the Bay Area counties with no mask mandate that includes Citrus, Hardy, Hernando, Highland, and Polk, with the exception of Lakeland that does have a mask order in place. And I put them to our testing scale. How I did this, I divided their total number of tests into ours to find out how many times more we tested. Then I took that number and multiplied it to their total case number to show what they may have had, had they tested the same amount. I guess you would call it a test of positive case ratio. I did this for a population as well. And under advisement from Commissioner Eggers, I'm going to only focus on two, but I did email each of you this. Citrus County, as of Saturday, these were as of Saturday numbers, total tested 2,000, I'm sorry, 22,510. They had confirmed cases of 2,211. We, they tested 11% of our total, which was nine times more, which came to about 19,899 cases to our scale. Then Hernando County tested a total of 24,196. They have 2,742 confirmed cases. They tested 14% of our total, which is eight times more than, we had eight times more than them totaling about 21,936 cases to our scale. Based on the population, Citrus County has 15% of our population with 2,211 cases. We have 6.5 times their population based on 2,211 cases to 149,657 people. Citrus County would have 14,371 cases to our population scale. As far as Hernando County, they have 19% of our population and 2,742 cases. We have five times their population based on 2,742 cases to 193,920 people. Hernando County would have had approximately 13,710 cases to our scale. So, you know, just looking on these numbers, trying to do the hypothetical projection of where they might be compared to us if we had the same baseline of numbers. I'm just hoping that this will aid in ending our mask mandates sooner than later and kind of give a different perspective when it comes to how they do without a mask and how we do with it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have seven speakers remaining. Our next speaker is Dave Waddell. Mr. Waddell, welcome back to the commission. And if you'll unmute and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hey, folks. Honorable Chair, Board, and Staff, good afternoon. Well, looks like our numbers are down. What we've been doing is working. I think we should keep our foot on the gas. On a lighter note, I want to talk about ventilation. I copied on my Facebook page Commissioner Welsh, Commissioner Eggers, Commissioner Long, and I believe Commissioner Charlie Justice. I hope you paid close attention to it because down the road, people are going to be going indoors more. So we, you know, have an opportunity here on the front end to start making sure that we're getting the adequate air changes. In your typical home, it's two to three air changes. By the way, Mr. Eggers, didn't realize you were an engineer. I as well for 20 years, but typical home is two to three air changes an hour. And in a commercial structure, regardless of square foot, anywhere is between five and seven air changes an hour. Now, air changes don't necessarily necessitate clean air. I mean, you can push around dirtier. We need a MERV 13 or better filtration system. And if UV could be incorporated, which we do use in our hospitals and in our nursing homes, where we do have, you know, a great impact as we've learned from a viral condition. And the new studies are showing that no, six feet, that's nothing. This stuff aerosolized can go out 27 feet. So what's important are the air changes and what we want is a positive pressure airflow. That means we are supplying more air than required and that when the doors and whatnot open, that we're pushing out bad air and we're putting back in more clean air. This is our future to get away from masks. If that's what everybody wants to do, we gotta breathe clean air. We're going to be going back indoors. It's going to start getting cold and you know it's 60 degrees. We put our sweatpants and our sweaters on. So I'm giving you a heads up again, another tool in the toolbox. And you do have oversight on this, by the way. Air quality is an issue at the state and county level. This falls in your jurisdiction. This is the key to get out of the pickle we're in. All right? Everybody's whining about masks. For goodness sakes, you know, we're going to still have to do that and it's going to take time to transition and make sure that all these indoor air qualities are sufficient to remove as much of the virus as possible. It may be a burden cost-wise, but what's a life cost? I mean, you know, or what are, I don't even know where we are. If we're, I think we were getting close to one or 2%. And I haven't heard much on contact tracing.
Mr. Waddell, your time has expired, sir.
Where we are on testing. Thank you for your time and I look forward to talking with you later. It's going to be a long day and God bless you all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have six remaining speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is coming in on the telephone line, last four digits, 1330. If you can go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board. And 1330, you're going to have to unmute your line. Hello?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is David Ballard Gettis Jr. I live at 802 Georgia Avenue, Palm Harbor. In the establishing of tyrants, the Declaration of Independence states that mankind is more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable and that this political evil is to be held in secrecy in Article One, Section Five of this Constitution. An evil first obtaining suffrages themselves, then betraying the interests of mankind as stated in Federalist Paper Number Ten prejudicially securing the blessings of liberty to themselves and their posterity as ordained in the preamble of this Constitution. Obnoxious men of sinister design and factious tempers constitutionally held in secrecy and evil as declared suffering as a ship of war in times of peace in Article One, Section Ten proactivated as a subterfuge of government interpositioned induced undertaken nonetheless as a political blackout operation in and of the state, an evil of such hoping to emancipate itself and its posterity abridged under the Fourteenth Amendment as enumerated from Article One, Section Two from the requisite of Hamilton's First Constitution, a political blackout operation held in secrecy as an evil condestine undertaking hoping to emancipate itself with constitutional privileges and immunities as its jurisdiction as a water jurisdiction, giving rise to birthing a body politic through the dissolution of the arbitrary nature of our current political pretentiousness as declared. A political blackout operation feeling enslaved under our current Constitution, laboriously birthing, giving rise to aggregating despotic Fourteenth Amendment water jurisdictions intent on controlling the will of man in Federalist Paper Seventy-Nine claiming to be nature's god in the Declaration of Independence seditiously. I find this integrant of government unforthrightfully working in and of the state, this political blackout operation emancipated as water despots and tyrants could be nonetheless the legislation of the British Brotherhood as written in the Declaration of Independence. President John Adams once stated that the British subjects feel enslaved under the current system of government. The Black Lives Matter movement is in reality coded language applicable to the legislation of the British Brotherhood. And again, I find this Black Lives Movement a political mockery of the civilian population and I disapprove of this media propagation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have four speakers that wish to be heard remaining. Our next speaker is Dr. Elena Levine. Dr. Levine, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, it's Elena Levine, E L E N A, L E V I N A, and it's M D. Thank you. First, I want to thank, oh, my address, 936 Virginia Street in Dunedin.
Thank you.
34698. First, I want to thank you all for unanimously voting to extend the mask requirement last week. I'm putting a thing on the table here now to not have to keep doing this every week. Your energy and time could be so much better spent. And now that we're coming up soon on cold and influenza season, it's going to be even more extremely crucial that we use this key. This is the key tool we have to prevent the spread of COVID. If you add a cold or an influenza infection, it will be much more dangerous and also harder to diagnose. So that's one piece. To make it extended through the winter makes much more sense. We are in no way going to have herd immunity anytime soon or a vaccine widespread enough that works. Please extend this for months and months and stop having to hear all this every week. The other piece is epidemiology has to rule. I was very disturbed by the first caller's use of numbers. Numbers don't reflect that every one of these reported cases can be devastating. And also, we must remember 40% approximately have no symptoms at all and are spreading it to people who get it in a devastating way. The epidemiology in New Zealand, where this was handled properly, they had a quote surge recently, and that was 12 reported cases. 12, if you want to use numbers, in the whole country. We had 51,000 college students alone in the last two weeks reported tested positive here. Masks have been proven even in one town versus another in Germany to work to completely stop the spread in the most effective way. I love the guys talk about ventilation, but that's extremely expensive and not realistic in any short-term timeframe. So we, I urge you to keep the most important key public health tool we have in place. Of course, it's not enforced and people aren't using it. And that's why this state is very different than other states. If we had cultures like North, South Korea and Japan where mask wearing is you, is common, and we could make this not political, we could actually get a handle on this and reduce these horrible tragedies. So I'm urging you to extend it longer. The other thing I noticed on the agenda this week is a whole slew of items that I think is wonderful to help people. We are, we are all in the same storm, but we're not all in the same boat in this COVID time and day. It's hitting certain people much harder. And to extend waivers on utility bills, late fees and mortgage and rent payments, I think all of those things should be absolutely done to help those in need most with homeless. There were a lot of things on the agenda I thought were wonderful. I hope you all vote in favor of those things and, and do whatever you can to help the people. We are all one community and helping others in our community helps all of us. And to get everyone back to work sooner and, and not having these horrible financial on top of these devastating health issues. We have friends who are
Dr. Levine, your time has expired, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have four speakers remaining that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Karen Mullins. Ms. Mullins, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon, Karen Mullins, M U L L I N S, Dunedin, Florida. Thanks for letting me speak. I am for keeping the face mask ordinance. I understand that the president has just stated that he underplayed the intensity and the seriousness of this disease. We need to take that into account. Secondly, I'd like to comment on the Douglas property. I'm looking forward to hearing in the future that we're moving forward with the Douglas property in Dunedin. And thirdly, I want to thank every single one of you for what you do. You are wonderful people. You're keeping everybody in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have four speakers remaining that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Nicole Matthews. Nicole, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon, Nicole Matthews, M A T T H E U S, Dunedin, Florida. I did send an email to the commission. I'm still waiting for responses or answers to the questions. But I have organized a group that is now just shy of 500 members. That is mainly Dunedin residents. And we have organized a few questions. These are paraphrased directly from the Facebook page. We would like to see the Douglas Hackworth property, the purchase of the Douglas Hackworth property to be an agenda item. And we would also like to encourage protection of the cemetery adjacent to the property. And if expansion of that cemetery is possible, that would also be something that we would like to see. This is the oldest cemetery in Pinellas County and an application is being processed to have this identified as a historical site. Right now it is full, so we would like that it to be protected and also the possibility of it expanded. We're also wondering what the status of funding to purchase the property if the Pulte, Pult contract falls through. And we're basically looking for updates. We haven't received updates in, over a week. And we're also wondering if there is a backup plan, if Pult home contract does go through, who will be working with them to ensure that at least part of the property is preserved and the cemetery is protected. Lastly, we also would like to thank you for the work that you have been doing. And again, just encourage you to keep giving us updates. We definitely appreciate updates on what's going on with this property. And yeah, feel free to reply to the email that was sent out to answer these questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have five remaining speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Virginia. Virginia, I don't have your last name, so if you go ahead and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board. And you'll have to unmute Virginia. Virginia, can you hear us? Virginia? Hello? Madam Chair, I'm going to move to the next speaker and we can try to come back to Virginia in a little bit. I think she might be having audio difficulty. Our next speaker is Alison Barden. Alison, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board. And you'll have to unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. My name is Alison Barden, A L I S O N B A R D E N. And I am in Seminole, Florida. And I just want to take this moment and just say thank you to each and every one of you. You guys do this job and you guys are weapons for punishment, as it were, where everybody has a mode to just come and say their opinion and you guys are still trying to make the best decision during this time. There's no rulebook of how to navigate a pandemic. So whether you make a choice one way or another, there's always going to be somebody who's critical of you. And so I just want to say thank you. I truly believe that you guys are doing the best that you can and that we appreciate you having our interest at the forefront of your mind. So just wanted to say thank you and you guys have a great day.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have five remaining speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Yvette Gah, G A U G H. Yvette, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board. And Yvette, you'll have to unmute on your side, please.
Got it. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay. Hey, this is Yvette Gah, 9371 Blind Pass Road, St. Pete Beach, Florida. So a couple of things, I'm always looking at the numbers and, and, you know, with all due respect to Dr. Levine, I just, I'm really glad that she's not my doctor because she is misinformed. There are a lot of doctors out there that have the golden handcuffs on and I've met many of them in private because if they speak out against what the truth really is, then they will be reprimanded or possibly lose their license. So that's the other thing. And the fear mongering that's going on for people with the numbers that we have, which is very similar to the flu. So I wanted to read you something that was from the New York Times. And we're basing all of our policies on these case numbers. So you notice we're not talking about deaths. We're talking about cases with 85% of the cases being asymptomatic. So the standard tests are diagnosing huge numbers of people and there were three studies and it was out of the New York Times of people who may be carrying relatively insignificant amounts of the virus. But because they amplify it 30 to 40 times, it's showing up as a positive when it's actually a false positive because they have no, no possibility of carrying it or giving it away. So I want to come back to the doctors to ask if you have brought someone, because if you do not have someone to come speak to you, I have a triple board certified physician that would be more than happy to talk to your doctors. I have several that would be more than happy to talk to your board and to your doctors about the other side of science. Because you guys are hearing one truth, there is actually another truth. And I implore you, there are 330 million people in this country. 9% have, have died with COVID, not of it. They have an average of 2.5 comorbidities. But guess what? More people have died of other things and we're not talking about the 1.6 million people that have died of heart disease. And we go back to what the other gentleman said about talking about the immune system. So I implore you to please look at the numbers and then from the age group of zero to 24, 330 across the country have died with COVID with two and a half comorbidities in the entire country. And we're locking down our schools. We're having to wear masks. We're scaring everybody to death. They're losing their empathy. They're showing up in hazmat suits because they're so fearful. 330 in the entire country between the ages of zero and 24. And this is straight from the CDC. And I'm passionate about it because I think we are doing a disservice to our citizens. So I implore you to look at the other side and I can provide that information. And I did email 15 studies to show the inefficacies of masks. And what you're going to see is that these studies were all available pre-COVID. And once COVID hit, they were all bumped to the bottom of Google. All these studies that have been going on for years and years and years, they've been bumped. So guys, we just need to wake up. And, and the fear mongering from some of these callers, they don't have a clue.
Your time has expired.
Anyway, I apologize. Thanks, guys. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is coming in on the phone line, last four digits, 4750. If you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, Greg Pound, Largo, Florida. The issue that I want to address is the massive corruption we have in our country through our politicians, our leaders. And we have a major problem right in Pinellas County that is not being dealt with. And after coming to this county commission meeting now for over 15 years with evidence, documentation, illegal people in office, people we can't get out of office, we can't vote them out. They won't step down. These people are destroying our republic and our country for money. And the Bible encourages us to buy the truth and sell it not. And when we have our leaders who sell out the truth for power and money, it's a major problem when people get in positions of authority of keeping themselves under control, realizing they're supposed to be servant. And we can just see the people that we have elected in the office, I don't even believe half these people that are in our county commissions are commissioners. It's like they move them from one spot. Somebody's moving you people in there and moving you out as, as we go here. Because no one can run against you. No one can get you out. And we have this constant thing between Tallahassee and Pinellas County and we have this massive corruption. And it, and it's all, it's all destroying. It's like a cancer that's eating at the core of our country. Because if we have leaders who aren't going to protect the people, we don't have, we don't have shepherds. We have wolves for our shepherds. It says, the shepherd will lay down his life for the sheep. You guys don't laying down your lives, standing for truth and building our whole system on truth. And I mean, I can give you your names. I've given your names before. You know who you are and I just tried to appeal to you. You're not, you don't see the judgment we're under? You don't see the judgment this country's under and it's getting worse? What's been done to the children? What's been done to the family? I mean, we just see a rapid problem with violence. I mean, the Bible plainly makes it clear, you destroyed the family, you're destroying the very foundation of the whole system that you're trying to build. It's not going to function. We're becoming a dysfunctional country. I mean, you can't get anything done. It's like just try to get on the line and, and try to call some officer, someone and talk to and, and just, and just see what happens. It's like the people are like, what happened to them? And so this is where we're at. We're in a, in a, in a real sad situation. I mean, I was in public at Indian Rocks. All the men are wearing fingernail polish. I, young guys, the young guys, I asked them, why, what do you guys, is it because Halloween's coming? And it's just really sad to see. These are fatherless children, children without fathers.
Mr. Pound, your time has expired, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, our next speaker is Karen. I don't have a last name, so Karen, if you go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon. It's Karen Nasello. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm on my phone this time. It's K A R E N N A S E L L O and I'm a St. Petersburg resident. And thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. I've been on your calls now for the last couple of months. I wanted to amplify the two calls ago, Yvette Gah and the information that she presented as far as the studies and regarding, you know, the science and the numbers and the masks and the fear mongering. You know, she's, she's offering, you know, the opportunity for you to, you to have access that maybe you're, you're, you're not aware of to all the commissioners. And again, what, what she was saying is that, you know, you're, and even the last caller, you're, you're obviously elected officials that are to serve the, the residents of Pinellas County and that you owe it to us to kind of do your homework, so to speak, and, and have all of the information and not just have biased and skewed information from which to make decisions on. And having an understanding, the big picture and again, the science and the numbers, I mean, what kind of owe it to us, I guess is what I want to say. And the previous caller to Yvette, and I just got on right when she was halfway through her call saying, oh, we have our masks. Well, what a, what a weak empowering, excuse me, disempowering thing to say. And I said this on the last time I was on the call is if, you know, we're acting as though we're all newborn babies with no immune systems. Again, you know, how, how like hand, it's like people are just handing their health, their responsibility for their own health over to authorities and saying, oh, I can't do anything to help myself. Well, you sure can. You can take vitamin C, take vitamin D, you can eat lots of fruits and vegetables. Well, you sure can. You can take vitamin C, take vitamin D, you can eat lots of fruits and vegetables, you can exercise, you can get sunshine, you can walk on the beach, you can lose weight. You can, you know, have a spiritual practice, be in community. I mean, there's, why are your doctors, who are on your staff or you're serving the county, not talking about these things? And what, you know, I guess what I want to say too, and I realize my time's about up, is all of us are getting on here asking these questions, but you guys don't ever answer them. You know what I mean? Like, we're making these points that are valid points and making you aware of the science, and here's the information, and here's the stats. But we don't get any response. It's like, it's kind of like we're throwing it up against a brick wall, and then there's nothing being done with it. With all due respect, I realize you guys are being inundated, but, you know, my appeal would be to say, you know, please, open your minds, take this information and consider it all, and not just go by biased, you know, one-sided information from which making a decision. It's not fair. It's just not fair. The detriment, there's already been all the information out there, the detriment to this lockdown. And now people are, I just came from the gym.
Your time has expired.
Wear a mask, breathe their own CO2 on a treadmill, like they're going to pass out. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have three speakers remaining. Our next speaker is, I just have a number, I don't have a name, so 17278. If you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board. And you'll have to unmute on your side, please. Hello? All right, we'll move on to the next speaker. Our next speaker is Virginia. And Virginia, I'll go ahead and go to you again. If you'll give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you have to unmute on your side, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. Virginia, you'll have to unmute the Zoom meeting on your side. And Madam Chair, I think that she's having technical difficulty again. I'm going to go to the next caller. Our next caller is last four digits, 2157. If you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, this is Virginia Dassler.
Okay, sorry.
124646 Crown Drive, Largo, Florida, 33774. I first want to start with the misinformation from Dr. Levine. It's sad that doctors have to call in and give such misinformation like that. Sorry for our patience. It's sad that I have to call, when I call up a doctor, I have to ask if they're Democratic or Republican, because I'm going to probably get a different answer from either doctor. I'm going to refer to the beginning of your minutes as far as how this all started with the numbers being escalating and the beds, hospital beds not having enough, and all that he referenced to even begin this mandate. And all those things have changed. They have changed drastically from where this started. The waiver of chapter 124 was waived, so at least start again and rewrite this information. Your web link to end that form of 2014 doesn't even exist anymore. It's not even available. So as far as I'm concerned, that whole ordinance isn't legit because you can't even go to a real link. You know, the laws are just changing. Everything's changing, and it really, like everybody says, you have a very biased opinion on this. I have sent you numerous in the record information of the Constitution has been, is showing up on this, you guys. We have a constitutional freedom to live in harmony and peace and be in charge of our own bodies. This has been long enough. I have 1,500 or more groups, and nobody's dying around us. I do not understand this. I am sympathetic. If there was people dying around you, believe me, I would be in your court, I would have a mask on, I would be preaching or be on the opposite side of this, of life-saving. I believe in that with a passion, but these cloth masks are dangerous. More information is coming out that masks used can cause bacteria. You know those little kids are snotty and getting wet claws, and then they're wearing them. And then they're crying because they lose them, or they're falling off, or somebody takes them. You talk about family, somebody said you are destroying the core of the family. This is very sad. You know, we are in a charter community. It's a charter commission. And you guys want to recall, you want one, I'm looking it up. Please, serve your people. Look at the right information, Dr. Uli Choi. I sent you enough information that shows. There's not enough information for you to be making this mass decision, a mass mandating that could cause a mass infection and to be constitutionally, it is unconstitutional for you to mandate anything on influenza. So she better go look at her constitution on that because it's a constitutional law in there that you cannot even go on influenza. So take that one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, we have three remaining speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Laura. Laura, I don't have your last name, so go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to basically just say that Virginia and Yvette nailed it 100%. On September 5th, the total deaths in this country were 15,163. COVID-related is 298. That is 1.9%. And Dr. Levine also said that President Trump had stated that he didn't take it seriously enough. Okay, you cannot bring something like that up. When he said that in January, he's acknowledging it now with his interview with Bob Woodward. But that was stated in January, and he was trying not to panic anybody. But that aside, that has nothing in any way, shape or form to do with where we are with the numbers today. So I would say worst-case scenario, at least make it voluntary. And, you know, I mean, everybody's saying it, except for the naysayers, but this is against our constitutional rights. My husband and I both own businesses. We know plenty of people who own businesses, and we are hurting. I mean, we can't even get unemployment, and I know people who have died from overdoses who weren't even doing drugs anymore because they are stuck in their homes and they're losing their minds and they're drug addicts. You have got to consider all the collateral damage and what's going to cause, and our children breathing CO2 all day long. My goddaughter, her mother wanted to send her to school, but she's keeping her home, not because she's afraid of the virus, all the fear mongering, she's not buying it, but because she doesn't want her daughter breathing in CO2 all day. That is absurd. We don't even know what that's going to turn into five years from now, 10 years from now, et cetera. So I thank you so much for your time and consideration, but you have got to look at the reality here and not just make choices based on your personal opinions. You have to look at the real numbers and not just believe Dr. Levine when there's so, there are thousands of other doctors that have exact opposite, not opinions, but data to back up what we're saying. Thank you very much.
Laura, for the record, can we get your name and address, please?
Sure, I'm sorry. Laura Edwards, 10575 125th Street, Seminole, Florida, 33778.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments. Madam Chair, our next speaker is Jake Geffen. Jake, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jake Geffen. I am at 10070 South Yacht Club Drive in Treasure Island. I just wanted to say, I've been pretty thankful for the mask mandate here in Pinellas County. I feel as if when Florida was the hotspot of the entire nation, and in fact, like Western Hemisphere, when I saw that Pinellas County was, had some of the lowest amounts of cases in comparison, I felt a little moment of pride right there. I would only ask that when we continue through this pandemic, that we create more programs meant as a safety net for the working class, like rent aid, I mean, I lost my job right before the pandemic. I work in service, only ever really worked in the restaurant business. And I don't qualify for unemployment, and I don't qualify for the stimulus. So just like issues to help the working people of this county stay afloat. Because, I mean, I'm 19 years old, I've lived through two recessions so far, and pretty worried about everything going on in the future. So I really think that it would be nicer to be able to look to my county leadership and state leadership too, but that's another story. State leadership and be able to say they're doing what they need to do to protect us. And I think the mask mandate is good, and I think that some of the precautions being taken are great, but we need to have a larger safety net for the working class. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have two remaining speakers that wish to be heard. Our next speaker is Carla Rudolph. Ms. Rudolph, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, this is Carla Rudolph. I live in St. Petersburg. Yeah, I've called in for the past, you know, couple meetings and requesting that if you're not going to get rid of this mandate, that you at least make it voluntary. I do have an issue with wearing a mask, and they are, they're unhealthy. I mean, just, I mean, I've listened to the callers, I mean, Yvette and Karen and Virginia and Laura, and even the gentleman. There's so much truth in what they're saying. And unfortunately, if you don't know the truth, people can feed you lies all day long, and you don't know it. And I think that's what's going on here, and I'm getting a little upset. I think you guys are getting fed lots of lies, and you don't know it. You don't even know you're getting lies because you don't know the truth or you're refusing to listen to the truth. This is political. I don't care if people say they don't want it to be political. Unfortunately, it is. There's no way around it. There's so many things wrong with this that I don't even, I don't even know what to say. It's, we need to wake up. And, you know, the last caller, Jake, you know, he's 19, and, you know, I know he's young, and, you know, but he sees what's going on. But I think he's a little bit deceived in thinking that this mask mandate is going to save anybody. It's not. He wants everybody to stay afloat. That's great. We all need, we all need the small businesses to get back to work. We don't need our government supporting us. We need everybody to get back to work and back to our lives and support ourselves. The government cannot support us. It doesn't work like that. The people should support the government, and you guys should be looking after our butts, to tell you the truth, and I don't think you are. So I'm asking you to please wake up. I mean, there's, you probably heard the phrase, you know, take the red pill. There's just so many things. You've probably heard these things. They're political, yes. But there's so much lies out there, and I think you guys are believing the lies. Please stop this and just stop the mandates. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have one remaining speaker that wishes to be heard. Again, we only have a number, not a name, so 17278. If you'll go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your name and spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes to address the board. And again, you'll have to unmute on your side on the Zoom.
Hello, Jake Geffen. I live in St. Pete, 3455th Street North, St. Petersburg, Florida. I just feel that Dr. Levine has false information and that if you're wearing a mask, unless it's an N95, it's really not protecting you. So these businesses need to, you know, I think it should be voluntarily. If you want to wear a mask, it should be voluntarily. And we should, it is against the Constitution, and I just feel you should do the right thing and make it voluntarily. If you want to wear a mask, fine. If not, then that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we had one last hand that went up. It's from a Galaxy S10E device. I don't have a name on it. So if you give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board. And Galaxy S10.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
My last name is Gozo. I'm in Tarpin Springs. And I just think that the anti-maskers sound very coordinated. And I'm very, I'm hoping it's not one of the commissioners that's doing that. I just have an awful feeling that it is. And I really thank you guys for making it a mandate, because, you know, it was voluntary and no one did it. You know, people think that you want to mandate something, which is absolutely not the truth. But when you go out there and there are people literally behind you, breathing on you without a mask, and it's 100% political, I believe, I don't think there's any reason, you know, I'm going to be a doctor like everybody else. I don't think there's any reason you can't wear a mask. There's no reason. Take a break, whatever. Masks are working in Pinellas. I thank you guys for keeping it mandated, and I really think you should look within your own ranks. Because it just seemed to me today that this was a coordinated effort to come on here with the anti-mask, alternate facts, science deniers, and it's just a little disgusting. So hopefully you will do the right thing, keep the mask mandated, and keep Pinellas safe. So thank you for what you've done. We do appreciate it. Have a great day.
Ms. Gozo, just for the record, can we get your spelling and address, please?
Yeah, it's Kathleen, and the Gozo, it's G O Z O, and I'm in Tarpin Springs, 34689.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep, thank you.
Madam Chair, we had one last hand that went up.
Okay, this will be the last one.
Okay, thank you. And all I have is a name. It says Seclusion Services. And so if you go ahead and unmute and give us your first, last name, spelling and address, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
My name is Robert Hellinger. My business address is 801 West Bay Drive, Suite Number 323 in Largo. It's time to end the mask mandate and make masks a choice. The majority of the population, including those working in businesses that have strict rules for masks, still wear them. There's a large group petitioning to make masks a choice for Pinellas County residents. It started less than three weeks ago, but we already got 1,500 members, strong and growing. The citizens of this county want freedom to choose. There's another group on Facebook called Pinellas County Watch. Its goal is for citizen oversight over you, the commissioners. Concerned citizens in this county will hold the board accountable for your actions. Our group continues to gain numbers and mobilize against this unconstitutional mask mandate, a heavy-handed restriction lasting for months that isn't even a law. It's time to listen to what the people of the community want. You are elected officials. After all, you're supposed to be representing us. If you want proof, look at the county's organization chart. Citizens are at top. You work for us. It's time to follow the data in our county and make masks a choice. The forced mask ordinance you imposed had more citizens against it than for it from day one, and the opposition against will grow, continue to grow. It is my hope the situation will be a deciding factor. And Pinellas County residents voting out Janet Long and Charlie Justice and voting in Larry Ahern and Tammy Vasquez to the Pinellas County Commission. I am confident that Vasquez and Ahern will represent the citizens who elect them instead of continuing this mask mandate months into the future with no end in sight. What are the perimeters for ending forced masks on the people of this community? We have asked, and we do not have an answer yet. We demand an answer. We don't ask for much, only two things to be exact. One would be to stop lying to the citizens and stop passing the buck. You shut down local businesses, not the sheriff or governor. Stop lying about it. Seems the only honest person on the commission is Commissioner Peters, whom I'd like to thank for actually listening to the people she represents. Rest of you should be ashamed. Two, you need to make masks a choice. This is what your constituents are asking of you. Suggest you listen to them, or more of you may be faced with an early retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers that wish to be heard.
Okay, great. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything on there that needs to be pulled?
No.
Second.
I've got two items, Madam Chair.
Okay, yeah.
You're moving too fast for me today. Items eight and nine.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Seal, second from Commissioner Long for the rest.
All of you, if I interrupt momentarily and recommend that you offer an opportunity to comment on any consent agenda items as a group, citizen comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, sure.
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on the consent agenda, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, we do have one hand that went up. Mr. Dave Waddell, we'll go ahead and unmute. Mr. Waddell, you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hey, folks, once again, Honorable Chair, Board, Staff. There's been quite a bit of confusion. I saw last week where you guys all afternoon were sitting around, you talked about this very item. You know, how many minutes, this, that, and the other thing. Do we put citizens to be heard at 2 o'clock and at 6 o'clock? And the continuity is And the continuity is lacking. And there's some confusion that's been created by all of this. And I'm glad. Thank you, County Attorney Jewel White, for bringing that to their attention. Yes, we do get to comment on all agenda items. And I will also point out to you that when I looked at the agenda yesterday, there wasn't any consent agenda that recognized what items would be in the consent agenda. Now, I'm pretty well-versed and my God, you guys have made a lot of changes, so I got to step up my game. But there's some clarification and clarity regarding the transparency. And it's, you know, you're, you're walking a fine line on some sunshine issues here. And I really, I'm just, I just want to caution you to this fact. The gentleman earlier, by the way, I, I, you know, that, that to me is civil disobedience. And it was brought up a number of occasions and I'm surprised that the County Sheriff, Bob, didn't respond to that. But to turn around and make some sort of an election statement and who's this and who is that? This isn't the time or the place. But I do want to have a more organized and representation, mutual respect for our commission. And I think you're doing a great job under the circumstances. And I want to reiterate that because it's real easy for me to get pissed off. All right? I've been around the block with you folks now going on since 2005. The system is hard enough to understand, but we need to recognize that what you put online and what occurs here meets all the sunshine requirements. And I think if County Attorney Jewel White would refer to that and make sure that what I read publication-wise online, there was nothing relative to some consent agenda. If I'm not mistaken, 72 hours is the required time when items will be moved from the regular agenda schedule to the consent agenda. So that's all I got to say. And I know you're under a lot of pressure. We all are. Hey, it's crazy town out there. It was funny. Yesterday I was only out for a short.
Mr. Waddell, your time expired, sir.
Wait, let me just real quickly say, I saw four car accidents in a period of less than about a 15-minute ride to Walgreens. So not everybody is on their toes and God bless us all, but that toolkit, hey, we got to build it, that ventilation. I'm telling you, it's key. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no other speakers that wish to be heard on the consent agenda.
Okay, well, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please raise your hand. Item passes unanimously. Item eight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see this ATS system, ATMS system, Commissioner Seal, moving to 49th Street. I had a question on the map. I don't know, Brian, if you can pull up the map attachment on it.
Give me one moment. Okay.
And promote Kelly into the meeting.
Yeah, Kelly's there when we need her. All right.
And I know under previous agreements that some of the features of ATMS did not, we did not implement them within the city of St. Pete. And that was a negotiated agreement. But on this one, it stops at 46th Avenue North. My question was, are there plans to extend that south? And I would think ultimately to connect with Pasadena Avenue South, 22nd Avenue South, which then connects to I-275 to the east. So a bunch of questions in there, but is there, are there plans to move further south with this at some point?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Good afternoon. Kelly Hemmerlebe, Public Works Director. I will get you the exact answer, sir. But yes, there is, I mean, I know there are plans to move down into St. Pete, you know, with, with the fiber. And we're, we're also looking now that we have the agreement in place with DOT for expanded non-public, but non-transportation uses and looking at how we maximize the capacity of that system. So I'll get you the exact map, but I, we do have a project heading down all the way into St. Pete as well.
Okay, thank you. I'd move approval on that one, Madam Chair.
Second.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Eggers. All in favor, please raise your hand. So, sorry, was I supposed to ask for public comment on that?
I think the opportunity to address any consent agenda previously covered us.
Okay, sorry. I'm out of practice with a full agenda. Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, item nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On that one, I had a question. There is a SBE letter attachment near the end. And Brian, you don't have to pull it up, but it says in the letter that they've made a determination regarding the amount of work that could be contracted. And they determined that the right number is 5%. So my question was, do we give them some kind of a target? Or are they just coming back with what they think is the right number?
Well, they come back with that, but we set a goal of 10% on this contract. And so we'll work with them to expand their use of small businesses as part of our ongoing work.
So the 5% is their estimate going in?
It's their estimate going in. But we set a higher goal and we'll need to work with them on how to expand their outreach and coordination with other small businesses.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, I saw. Commissioner Seal.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Welch, for pulling this off the agenda. I had a question on Sunset Point from King's Highway to Keene. Looks like from the drawings that they are not going to be adding bike lanes. It's just simply resurfacing. And I just wanted to confirm that.
I'll defer to Kelly on that.
I'll, I'll look at the exact scope for Sunset Point, but this is our three R, Phase Two of three R. So these are roads that have some structural issues where in a lot of cases we need to redo the base. And it's, it's more than just milling and resurfacing. And all the sidewalks are typically all brought up to ADA standards as part of that. But I'm not, I don't believe there's an added bike lane unless we're doing it by changing the striping. But I can check on that for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd move approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please. I'm sorry, do we need to? No?
For the consent.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously. Item, I'm not sure.
14.
14, thank you.
Item 14 is a purchase agreement with Florida Department of Transportation. This is for a small piece of property though used for maintenance and drainage as part of the, their overall property or purchase.
Second. Thank you. Do we have any public comments on this one?
This time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on a JADA item number 14, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine if you're on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there, oh, we have Commissioner Eggers that has a question, but there's no one on the public that wishes to be heard.
Yeah, I saw him. Commissioner Eggers.
Thank you. I'd mentioned before, Barry, about where the money's going. And it says, "The sale proceeds will be returned to the fund used for the original purchase from FDOT in 1968." So there must be a fund that we have that we buy property from FDOT and that this fund will be, the money will go into that fund. So it's, I mean, I just wondered what the purpose of the fund was, if it's to buy property from FDOT or, or what's going to happen with that extra, the funds that we're getting for that land or.
So in this particular, so in this, each, each, obviously, each one will be a little bit different. In this particular case, $67,300 will get deposited into the general fund in 2,260, I'm sorry.
2 million.
2,262,000 will get deposited in the capital improvement fund. And that was the proportionate amount, I guess, from the original purchase of the property.
But what is that, what's that fund there for? I mean, what, I mean, what is that? I mean, it says the, would be returned to the fund used to purchase. Is it strictly a?
Yeah. Correct. So we have our capital improvement fund. We also have, for instance, what we maintain all of our rights away. So we, so we have our fund to maintain all of our right of way and stuff. So if we use that, that particular piece, then it would be deposited there. If we, it would come out of our, just our penny funds, then that comes back to our penny funds for redistribution.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. Did I ask for comments on this?
Yes, we did, Madam Chair.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously. Item 16.
15 is rebuild Florida, CDBG, MIT, general infrastructure. Yes, so this is an opportunity for, for additional funds. This is so we can apply. Again, we're joining with St. Petersburg as a co-applicant for Resilient Utilities, their Resilient Utilities Program Submittal. And so we'll be requesting grant amounts of 62 million leveraging funds locally and the deadline September 14.
Second. Yeah, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. Do we have, Charlie, did I see your hand up? Commissioner Justice, no. Do we have any comments from the public?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item Number 15, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, it doesn't appear that there's anybody that wishes to comment.
If there are no questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Item 16.
This is fiscal year 2021 Elite Event Funding Recommendation. The Tourist Development Council included in a waiver of the Elite Event Funding Program Guidelines scoring requirements. The details are within your pocket.
And I think Steve is here.
Yeah, I'll promote him right now, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? I know we had a question last week about localtopia.
Steve, you like?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, you can hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Welch.
So again, my only question, Madam Chair, is what the next chairman in the TDC will do next year when there's a, an event that doesn't make the cut numerically? Oh, we said in the precedent here.
Um. I guess that remains to be seen, Commissioner Eggers.
I was going to say Eggers, but I didn't. I just said the next chair, but, but it's, I get it. It's a small amount of money, is funding a great project, but just when the next one comes, it didn't make the cut.
Right.
Point to this. So that's the only thing that.
And I think Steve can speak to why it was changed. That's why he's here. Also, this is not the first year that we've funded them. And as I said last week, the criteria is very different than all the other elite funding categories. So Steve, you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Welch, on this one, I think one of the key things is when, when the recommendations came to the full TDC, one of the TDC members recognized the fact that she had scored wrong and that she had scored it based on room night generation versus a category four, which is more attendance generation. And so that would have changed the score anyway. It still would have been below the 700, but the TDC as a whole felt that it was a worthwhile event and, and made the recommendation to go through and, and recommend the funding.
So it's still up to this commission whether we fund them or not. This is a recommendation from the TDC.
I'm fine with it. I mean, it was unanimous by the TDC, correct? And you, Madam Chair, with the understanding that in future years, it might be something that y'all have to revisit.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Seal.
Um, yes, I noticed the event funding for fiscal 2020 obviously changed because of COVID and cancellations. And so what if some of these events continue to be virtual? Are we going to be supporting it to the amount that is suggested? Or will this be negotiated depending on whether it's a virtual event versus an in-person event? Because that makes a big difference for room nights.
That's a great question.
And Commissioner Seal, on that, when we do talk with the various events, is to find out what their plans are. Again, most of these, I don't know if there's even a way to do it virtually. It's an, it's an in-person event. However, as an example, with like Valspar, they may not have fans, but they may still be on TV. And so there would be a benefit to us and to the county by having that exposure on TV. There also may be points, when this did happen this last year, where you had events that were promoting, hey, come to us, here's what we've got going on, that had to cancel. And we did reimburse some of those events for those marketing expenses going upfront. Because again, you know, as, as you all know, you know, we're living this day, you know, day to day and, and don't know what's going to happen going down that road.
Yes, Commissioner Welch.
I had one other question on the tabulation page. Just the Enchant St. Petersburg, 75,000 is in yellow for some reason. Does that signify it's something that I didn't?
Steve?
Yes, on that one, Enchant withdrew their application. Yeah, that, it was, as we got applications in, people would remove them if they didn't feel their event was going to happen. Some of them changed dates in the whole process or withdrew after we went through the process.
Okay.
We had at least four that pulled out knowing that they weren't going to have their event. And I'm sure there are others that are not going to have their event as we go forward. Okay. Any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 16, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, we do have one member of the public that wishes to comment. This is Jake Giffon. Jake, if you can go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address again for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, that's Jake, J-A-K-E, Giffon, G-E-F-F-O-N. Excuse my ignorance. I was just, what is this bill exactly? Not bill, I'm sorry. What is this exact, motion exactly doing? I read on the agenda for elite events and I was just curious to what all of that means for the city and is this setting a precedent for, I don't know, how we do events future into this pandemic? Thank you very much. Again, excuse my ignorance for not being aware.
Well, not a problem. It's, thanks for asking. The Tourist Development Council annually takes applications for a special event that draws people to the county from out of town and takes a look at how many participants they have, how many bed nights they're generating and several other pieces of criteria. The council has a set amount in mind beforehand usually about what they're, you know, the limit that they're willing to expend. And some of that is what determines how much, there are categories, there are different categories that people can apply for having differing. having differing amounts of money in them, uh, depending on how big the event is. So, uh, the tourist development council looks at all those applications and, um, forwards, uh, recommendations to the county commission.
Madam Chair.
Question.
We do have one other member that wishes to comment on this item.
Okay.
Uh, Don Bowler, uh, go ahead and unmute yourself and give us your spelling and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
All right, yeah, sorry. Uh, on Bowler, B S, O H L A R, St. Petersburg. Commissioner, I just want you to kind of clarify some. I know that there's been a lot of outrage going on as far as the bus wraps, you know, saying about, you know, wear a mask, you know, social distance. Just out of curiosity, has that been done, given the amount of tourism that's coming back to us? Because I know over the weekend, they did announce that, like, flights to Florida increased by two hundred percent. So I was just kind of curious. I know there's a question, um, going on as far as why it is on the buses. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there.
Okay. And I think I can have Steve talk a little bit about where that campaign came from, why it, why it is what it is.
Thank you, Commissioner. And yes, this campaign, um, is, uh, what we call Rise to Shine Campaign. And one is to help, uh, start the, uh, restart the generation of, of tourism back to our communities because, uh, we have been devastated by people not visiting. But we also want to make sure that those that are visiting know that, you know, again, there may be, um, things to protect them from CDC guidelines, you know, personal hygiene, um, things along that line. Um, and so we have advertising locally, but then we're also letting people know in our key markets that would visit this area typically this time of year, um, of, of what is happening here in Pinellas County.
Okay. So, and I have to, we got quite a few comments, uh, this week in email about the fact that we had a young person wearing a mask while on a, uh, sailboard, I think it was, which is kind of silly. And there was another one, I can't remember what that one was, but, um, can you talk a little bit about how they come up with this campaign and why they targeted this particular message?
Uh, yes, Commissioner. So part of it is, and again, uh, it's based on the research that we're seeing when we look at potential visitors, uh, that would go through and travel. And part of it is that they want to visit a community where they are going through and, and feeling, and I'm gonna use the word safe. Uh, and it, cause again, people are scared about traveling and what they might get. So this was the way to go through and raise that visibility up at those potential visitors. Again, we're trying to get people to, to restart coming here. And yes, we had a, a great weekend in terms of Labor Day and, and people visiting. And, you know, but again, as we move through the fall, we want to make sure that people that we're targeting are gonna want to come here uh, versus staying at home. And part of that is moving them away from their homes to come here and visit and spend and support our local businesses, which need, um, the visitors, uh, that would come to this community. So we use the messaging there. Again, you know, uh, we used illustrations, which was new, new for us. And again, there are some things in there, you know, uh, that, uh, we're trying to convey a larger picture. Um, and so again, you know, uh, someone wearing a mask on a, a sailboard may not necessarily be reflective. But again, in key places, we have a video out where they're talking about when you go into a restaurant, wearing a mask as you walk in, but you don't have to when you're eating. If you go into the lobby of the hotel, uh, you're wearing a mask, you know, there, but you don't have to in your room. Uh, same thing for shops, you know, again, along that line. Part of it again is just to help educate, uh, visitors in the market, but also visitors who could potentially come here.
Thank you. I just wanted to say too, um, this is my first year on the tourist development council, and I was very impressed with the research that goes into planning these campaigns and how much you could actually tell from what people are clicking. I'm kind of not very savvy about the internet, but you know, how, what you can tell from what people are clicking on, on the, on the internet, what they're, you know, what they're looking at, what the, what kind of questions they're asking. It's pretty amazing. In fact, it's a little frightening because there's not much privacy left, people. But, but that can tell a lot about the people that may be thinking of coming here just by where they're going on the internet, so.
Madam Chair, we did have one other hand that went up from the public.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Yvette Gah. Yvette, if you go ahead and unmute yourself and, uh, give us your spelling and address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Hey, guys, Yvette Gah, ninety-three seventy-one, Blind Pass Road, St. Pete Beach. Um, in regards to tourism, I will tell you, my husband and I travel a lot, and there are a significant amount of individuals who want to go to places where they have a choice. So right now, we're gonna be heading to South Dakota. Um, we're going to, we've been to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, and we are looking for locations where we take the responsibility ourselves. So having a campaign that says, you know what, Florida is an outdoor state, and then if you choose to wear a mask, if you think that little mask is gonna protect your health, but not that fried chicken that you're eating, you know, we need to like change the messaging and get a little smarter and maybe step out of that proverbial box and, um, and be different than everybody, right? And talk about, we have the best beaches to go, to go walk on, and we have the best bike trails. And, and stop this fear mongering with masks, right? And I mean, I saw a guy today at my boot camp, and he's riding around on his bike with a mask. I mean, they're gonna pass out. I mean, the studies have shown it. So why not be different? Why not look at the studies? And again, if you guys want material, I've already sent you twenty plus studies from PubMed and from OSHA that talked about that, but get the messaging out because we're going to places where we have freedom. That is where we're looking to go. And believe me, there's a lot more of those people than you guys think. Yeah, there are some that are afraid. Well, let them be afraid and let them eat their fried chicken and let them, you know, not exercise. That's not my problem. That is not the restaurant's problem. You know what? COVID does attack you sitting down or standing up if you're coughing and spitting on people. But we're healthy people. Nobody's getting COVID walking in a restaurant. If you think it's, you know, you're sitting down and standing up, I mean, common sense has to, gosh, guide us a little bit. Really? So anyway, that's all I have to say. Change the messaging. Be different. Thanks.
Thank you. I think it would be very different if we were South Dakota. Do we have any other speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right, uh, do we have a motion? Thank you. Second. Okay, we have, you guys are busy today. We have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously. I, item seventeen.
This is an agreement with District Six Medical Examiner for professional services related to the medical examiner's office and the forensic laboratory in the amount of six point two million dollars.
Move approval, Madam Chair. Second. Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item number sixteen, please, I'm sorry, number seventeen, uh, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there are no members of the public that wish to be heard on this item.
I think we, uh, Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is Dr. Thog Martin on the, uh?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just got knocked off here.
He should be here.
I am here.
There you are. Um. Good afternoon, sir. Always, uh, want to take advantage of the opportunity to hear your wisdom. Um, I noticed in here that our background says that the DNA section is roughly forty percent of the budget. Had, had that been your plan? And do you see that, uh, as peaking or leveling out?
Well, it all depends on the amount of work. It's just, um, it's been such a valuable part of the office that it's, you know, I'd say, yeah, it's about forty percent. It's, it's, it might be about that much. Yeah, yeah. Probably a million three, a million four, give or take, but the workload has been very, very steady.
And I hate to date myself, but how long ago did we ramp up the DNA?
Let's see, I want to say it was somewhere around, uh, oh, seven or oh, eight, right in there.
And your request for DNA work, is it mostly within the county or?
It's, yeah, it's all within the county. It's only Pinellas County.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Dr. Thog Martin? All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously. Thank you, Doctor. Item eighteen.
This is an agreement with Gulf Coast Legal Services for free legal aid, uh, to eligible residents.
Move approval.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item number eighteen, eighteen? Yes, thank you. Uh, hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there are no members of the public that wish to comment.
Okay, do you have any questions? No? All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously. Item nineteen.
Uh, this is a renewal of funding for bridge housing for families in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any, uh, comments?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item number nineteen, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, it doesn't appear that we have anybody that wishes to speak on this item.
Okay, there are no questions. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously. Item twenty.
Item twenty is, um, a funding agreement with Pinellas Hope for emergency shelter. Again, this is continuation funding.
Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions?
At this time, if there are any members of the, oh, I'm sorry, do you mean public comment, Madam Chair?
That was my next question.
Okay. At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item number twenty, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch. Uh, Commissioner Eggers, sorry.
You're muted, Commissioner Eggers.
There we go. Uh, sorry, uh, the last item and this item and the next item, if somebody could just, you know, briefly, again, we know we voted on the previous one, just say a couple of, uh, sentences each about each one of these programs. We've got folks, we may have new folks that are listening in, just what things we're approving here and what, how that might be able to help somebody that they know. That would be helpful. And those three items, even though I know we voted on nineteen already, I think it would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, I can do that. So, um, on item nineteen, uh, this renewal, it provides bridge funding, um, for, uh, bridge housing funding for families. This includes, um, emergency shelter beds, one full-time equivalent case manager, um, and case management resources, uh, within, um, the area. Again, this is for, the Homeless Eatership Alliance, uh, for their program. Uh, so it provides those services along with case management. Um, in the case of the emergent, uh, Pinellas Emergency Hope Emergency Shelter, uh, this emergency, um, shelter grant provides temporary housing and support services uh, out at our Pinellas Hope site.
Okay, and you got the Gulf Coast?
Oh, the Gulf Coast. Um, well, in this one, it provides free legal aid services. Seventy-five percent of the funding actually comes, um, out of, um, programs, uh, out of our courts, and then, um, the remaining comes out of the general fund. So about two hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars is collected from court fees, and then we're covering the remaining amount with general fund.
Thank you. Um, Brian, I think somebody has raised their hand.
Yeah, I'm not sure whether that's staff or public, so I'm gonna go ahead and unmute. Um. If you'll go ahead and give us your name and address for the record, you'll have three minutes. Hello? Hello? I can't, I can't tell who this is, Madam Chair.
I am that, that A T Y K B looks to be an attorney. I would suggest that that's probably somebody on my staff. I'm not sure who.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go ahead and.
Designation A T Y K B is generally part of our login information.
Okay.
Commissioner Seal.
Um, I believe it's David Waddell. He's been texting me. Thank you.
Okay. David, David does have his hands up. Are we at the point of public comment, Madam Chair?
Um, yes, sure.
And David, you keep raising and lowering your hand. Do you wish to comment? If you wish to comment on this item, go ahead and leave it up, and I can call on you, sir. Hold on one sec, Madam Chair. Um. Mr. Waddell, do you wish to comment on this, uh, agenda item? You'll have to unmute yourself on your side.
Yes, uh, a number of times. I, I wanted to comment on the tourist deal, all right? And my hand, my hand has been up every item, and it wasn't recognized. So something in the system must not be working right.
Your hand, your hand keeps going up and down.
Yeah, I was doing that to exercise the system to find out what was wrong.
Just leave, leave it, leave it up, and I will call on you, sir.
All right, well, that was back on the tourist issue, right? Right now, we got the Super Bowl coming up right around the corner. Over a month ago, I said we need to start taking a regional approach, okay? Super Bowl's right around the corner, February, right? Now, if I'm not mistaken, Miami became a hotspot, and they say that over seventy to eighty percent of the infections and, and, and contractions of that virus by, were by seasonal workers and people that came for the Super Bowl. We have what? Six months, five months to plan? All right, um, we need to take a regional approach to this. We have a lot of people that commute back and forth from Hillsborough, Manatee, Pasco, all over, all right? As far as this mask thing goes, until you get this thing under control and we get contact tracing going and mandatory reporting going and ventilation in buildings going, all right? We are gonna be having the Super Bowl here, and you think you've got problems now? We gotta capitalize on this opportunity. I don't know how far along that you guys are thinking down the road here, but we're gonna have a convergence of people that is gonna be amazing, just simply amazing. And we're talking about promoting ourselves right now. I haven't heard anybody mention the Super Bowl. It's gonna be held here. For goodness sakes, we need to stake, first of all, a regional approach. We need to coordinate with all of our surrounding counties. We've got one of the largest, largest events in the world about to take place less than twenty miles from here. So just want to give you a heads up on that, and that's where that ventilation, uh, in buildings comes in, okay? Our toolbox is empty. I haven't heard anything on contact tracing, testing. I haven't heard anything about testing. My God, we're just setting ourselves up, okay? So I thought I'd plant the seed, cause come February, it's gonna be here. And that NFL, hey, they're gonna push this down our throats. I guarantee you that. There's too many contracts, too much money out there, all right? And money wins. Greed, greed is why we're in the position we're in, all right? Tell me that that guy didn't know, all right? And protect the people of this country. Like I told you earlier, everything is local. It begins and ends here. We can't rely on the state, we can't rely on the feds, and we're gonna have the Super Bowl. Talk about an equation.
Mr. Waddell, your time has expired, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we, we're on item, um, twenty.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch, I believe. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is the second, um, option of a renewal with Bay Care, home care for home health, um, care for clients. Uh, this is through the homeless program. Uh, this re- renews a program that provides durable medical equipment, home nursing services, oxygen, outpatient, uh, rehabilitation services, wound care, infusion therapy. Um, and again, this is within the budget, five hundred fifty thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch. Do we have any questions?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item twenty-one, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there is nobody that wishes to comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Not. Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is a First Amendment to a Performance Language Agreement with Directions for Living for Community Development Block Grant Funding for Facility Improvements. This will provide an additional forty-two thousand dollars of investment for the Directions for living Clearwater Center, and this, let's see if I can, this is to provide an industrial backup generator.
Move approval.
I say twenty-one.
This is twenty-two, right?
Yeah, twenty-two.
Okay.
You said twenty-one.
Second. Sorry. Um, okay, do we have any questions?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item twenty-two, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, nobody wishes to comment on agenda item twenty-two.
Okay, well, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Seal. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item twenty-three.
This provides additional coronavirus relief funds from the Florida Housing Finance Corporation to receive housing assistance funds. This will provide one point six million dollars through this first round. The eligible uses are consistent even with our, within our own program, rental assistance, mortgage payments, emergency repairs, things like that. This will be to accept the grant. We'll be bringing back to you grant recipients at a later date.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch. Do we have any questions?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item twenty-three, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone.
But first, Commissioner Eggers and Commissioner Long have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I don't have a question. Commissioner Eggers does.
Did, and Barry, I was just looking at this again. Would see if these funds have to be expended by the end of the year also?
They do. As it currently stands, again, we are, you know, I know there's a lot of federal bills looking to try to extend these deadlines for all of current coronavirus relief funds. We're, you know, our lobbyist is working on that. We certainly support that, but until one of those bills passes, we're going off of the December thirty-first deadline.
Okay, that's the program. We have a program pretty well in place to do with funds like that, right?
We do. In this particular case, we, we know these funds are a little bit more flexible than the funds that we have, so higher income limits, we're going to try to target those that, of people that don't, that didn't fall within our two-on-one program, so it's going to be direct outreach to them to be able to move, move this program along. It will kind of provide a, an additional layer of funding assistance.
So moving a little quicker. If it, if it moves as slowly as the first one, we won't have any time to get it going. And, you know, I don't mean that critically, but just. Yeah.
We're, we're very aware of that timeline, so they actually, this, this week, they actually targeted and have a specific program that they're going to roll out where they can move this program. And actually, it will be a direct outreach, direct funding for period people that fell just outside of our program criteria.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Brian, do we have any callers?
Yeah, we have two people that wish to comment, Madam Chair. Our first comment, or our first caller is Dave Waddell. Dave, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
I really don't have a comment. I was just testing the system to make sure it worked because there were, I, I, and Brian, I'm sorry, I, I had to, you know, I was trying to cycle it. I didn't know if something locked up on my computer or what, but I wanted to comment on that tourist development deal, and I didn't hear anything about the Super Bowl, and that just freaked me out. I mean, we're going to have a lot of folks coming, so now that I know the button works, I feel much more comfortable. And I'll tell you, we got to keep up the Zoom stuff because you're going to get more public input and comment than ever. People traveling downtown and the emissions can get cut back. They don't have to park. Us old folks can get in and out a lot quicker. I'm all for this Zoom thing, and I'm sorry I got a little upset there, but I freaked out when I couldn't talk to you. So I just wanted to test it, and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dave. And just to respond to the Super Bowl thing, we don't know whether the Super Bowl is going to happen in person or not. So we did get a presentation quite some time ago from the organizing committee. We are working with them, assuming that there might be something going on. I'm sure we'll, we will have a request from them later for money, but we have not had anything directly from the organizing committee ask, making an ask yet. And so what we are talking about today is applications that have already happened. So.
We have one more public comment, Madam Chair. Jake Giffon, go ahead and unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hello again. I just want to say before I say anything, thank you for letting me take up so much time during this hearing. Sorry if it's a, if it's a lot. Um, so I wanted to ask, so I heard someone say that the funding for, that the funding that would be received only has until the end of the year to be spent. And so I guess my questions are, is the county, does the county have a plan to efficiently utilize those funds by the end of the year? If received, and in what capacity, oh, sorry, let me just think about the way I'm wording this. Yeah, what, does the city have a plan to spend these funds efficiently by the end of the year? And yeah, I guess I'm just concerned about the that issue. Sorry, it's been a long day. Um, yeah, thank you very much. Sorry for that.
I'm sure if you, if you want me to kind of briefly summarize, so yes, I would encourage you to go to our website. We outline the plan on the distribution of these funds. That includes individual and family assistance, assist nonprofit partnerships, direct COVID-nineteen mitigation and response to local governments and to the county, childcare facilities, workforce, reemployment and training areas, and local business grants. And so those are outlined within that, and those programs have been launched, and we're in the middle of literally reviewing applications and cutting checks as we speak.
Okay, do we have a motion second on this yet?
Yes, I have a motion by Commissioner Long and a second by Welch, Commissioner Welch.
Okay. All right, if there are no further questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item passes unanimously. Item twenty-four.
This is change order number one to a contract with Bay Shore Construction for the Fort De Soto Park Dune Walkover Project. What they're proposing here is that we issued this, the construction company is out on site, but we have some safety issues, so we want to amend the contract to add it in three specific areas for safety issues. That's handrails, decking and framing at three specific locations. This would add a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to the four hundred forty-eight thousand dollar contract.
Move approval. Second.
Yeah, we have a motion from Commissioner Eggers, second from Commissioner Welch. Do we have any questions?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item twenty-four, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there are no members of the public that wish to comment on this item.
If there are no questions, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. I mean, raise your hand, or both, I don't care. Okay, thank you. Unanimous. Item twenty-five.
This is a grant application with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, National Coastal Resiliency Fund for the Old Tampa Bay Felipe Park Seawall Enhancement Project. This will provide grant funds of a hundred thirty thousand dollars, matching funds of a hundred ninety-six thousand dollars from a variety of sources, including in-kind services. The project will focus on baseline water quality and wave energy monitoring site assessment to where sixty percent of the design, they'll be able to determine the viability of an enhanced living shoreline options. So again, this is a demonstration project that they'll learn from and be able to apply in other places also.
Okay, questions? Oh, was that just a motion? Second. Okay, are there any questions?
Yes. Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not really a question, just wanted to say that this is a project that the Tampa Bay Estuary Program is helping fund, and is very excited about the potential for all the things that Mr. Burton just talked about, a real chance to demonstrate and learn and, and hopefully translate that throughout our area. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any callers, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item twenty-five, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone.
How many people?
And Madam Chair, we do have one member of the public that wishes to comment, Mr. Dave Waddell. Dave, go ahead and unmute yourself. You'll have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. I just want to say we have some of probably the best parks in the country. I've had a number of visitors come down, and they're simply amazed. I take them off, down to Fort De Soto. Felipe Park is just up the way from me, and then, well, gosh, Caladese Island and Honeymoon Island. Boy, we've, we've got a lot to be proud of, all right? And Old Tampa Bay and our environmental approach. We're not getting much support from the state, but I'm hoping that the county is going to take a very sensitive approach to our environmental lands that are currently available vacant, and I'm not going to bring up any particulars, but we have a couple of opportunities here, and I, and I'm sorry what went, what went on with the Douglas property. I hope all that can be worked out, but there are a lot of funding sources available, both state and federal for preservations of land, one being the Trust for Public Lands, and heck, I've even been thinking about a GoFundMe page for my particular situation, and like I said, I'm not going to mention any particulars, but I think you all know who or what I'm talking about. My goodness, we're going to probably be underwater in twenty, maybe thirty years where I live. I don't have any grandchildren, but I do have nieces and nephews and extended family with a lot of young'uns, and I, I, it almost makes you want to tear up when I start thinking about coastal lands and what we've done to them. Just up on the north end of the Bayside Bridge, they're building multifamily housing now. We were able to preserve over there at the college, some wetlands. But Felipe Park, oh my goodness, that's just beautiful. You talk about some of the best fishing actually is in Old Tampa Bay. You talk to guys that go out fishing for redfish, and these are the hotspots. If you come across the Bayside Bridge, you'll see a lot of boats here when they're spawning or, or just after, and when the tidal flow is right, oh my goodness. Keep up the good work environmentally, and I don't know how much more I can put into it, except that when it's gone, it's gone. We've got a lot of vacant land or vacant and abandoned commercial properties that need to be utilized to support our tax base.
Mr. Waddell, your time has expired, sir.
Let's just support our environment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have one other speaker that wishes to be heard on this item. Jake Giffon, Jake, if you'll go ahead and unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Hi, thank you again for allowing me to speak. This will be my last time butting in for this meeting. I just wanted to say, growing up Jewish, we are instilled two main ideas. Tikun Olam, which is environmentalism, and Kahila Kadosh Abet Salim Elohim, which means to be a community under God. And that doesn't really mean like everybody's the same religion. That just means everybody's happy with each other, regardless of religion. And in this unprecedented time of the acceleration of the warming of our planet, Jews all across the nation, and especially here in Pinellas County with our vibrant Jewish community, are worried about the sea levels rising and are worried about, you know, our assets as a coastal city, we're surrounded by wat, Pinellas County, I mean, surrounded by water on like three sides. And I just want to stress the importance about how I personally feel according with my Jewish values creating a stronger coastal infrastructure to protect us from the impending rising sea levels. I live on Treasure Island, so I mean, I'm surrounded by water on all sides, and I feel as if, you know, I grew up here, I've never not lived on the water, and I feel as if my neighborhood in the next fifty years under current projections is probably going to be underwater. And it sounds insane, but it's the cold reality that we live in. So I want to thank you all for giving me the time to speak, and I appreciate you deliberating on this issue. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you. I think we have a motion by Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. Okay. All right, if there are no further questions, please raise your hand to say aye. Aye. Aye, thank you. Item twenty-five.
Twenty-six, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Felipe Park Seawall, no?
Yeah, that was, that was the last item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, okay. All right, twenty-six.
And this is an interlocal agreement between Pinellas County and the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Municipal Stormwater Sewer System Co-Permittees. So in essence, we have twenty-one communities that have come together. There's three that do it on their own, and you agree to certain terms to continue to implement N P D S requirements as co-permittees for all of our stormwater discharges. It's a national program. And again, this is twenty-one of the twenty-four communities.
Move approval.
Thank you. Second, we have a motion from Commissioner Welch, second from Commissioner Long. Do we have any comments?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item twenty-six, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there is nobody that wishes to comment on this item.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board? Not all in favor, please raise your hand for aye. Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Item twenty-seven.
So an agreement with Gulfstream Outsourcing Specialized Billing for Liability Claims. This is a pilot program that we're going to utilize to collect outstanding balances for liability claims. That's things like workers' compensation and car crashes of cases that were previously closed. If successful, then we look to expand this program.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Welch.
Explain the contingency fee and how that works.
Jim Bogart is on the line. If you'll promote him.
Yes, sir.
Get into specifics like that.
Jim, can you hear us? You'll have to unmute in your camera and audio. Jim, can you hear us? Okay. It looks like he's on, sir. Jim, you might have to change your audio source. I don't know if you're on a Bluetooth or something like that.
We could promote. I don't know the specific answer to your question. That's the reason I'm wanting Jim to answer that. Lourdes, are you on the line?
Uh, yes, very high. Good afternoon.
Do you know the answer to the Commissioner's question?
Yeah, basically, we expect to bring in five hundred thousand. They get about twenty-two percent of that. So our net revenue would be three hundred ninety thousand.
So that, that's on every claim they get twenty-two percent?
Yes.
Intingency, I guess I was stuck on the word.
Okay.
Intingency. But it says a twenty-two percent fee.
Oh, these are close cases, so it's, it's collecting what we otherwise wouldn't collect.
Okay.
Sorry, Brad. I think I'm online now.
Too late.
Lourdes covered for you.
Good timing, Jim.
Okay. Do we have any further questions? Not all in, entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item twenty-seven, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. Madam Chair, there is nobody that wishes to comment on this item.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. I am 28.
This is the interlocal agreement with Husborough County for limited solid waste processing services. In essence, when our waste energy facility has downtime, then they agree to back us up and we can ship waste to them. And if theirs has downtime for maintenance, then we can support them.
Commissioner Welsh.
I'd move approval with a comment. It just seems like a great idea. Is this the first time we've ever done this?
I don't know if it's been in place. I know it's been informally done in the past, but I don't know if we've had a formal agreement.
Second.
Do you have any other questions? Do we have any comments, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 28, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, we don't have any public comment on this agenda item.
Thank you. So if there are no further. Questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Item passes unanimously. Item 29.
This resolution would waive the customer late fees in connection with COVID. As you know, we suspended. Disconnects and we for a period of time, there are late fees that accumulated during that period. This would waive those. For the for the late fees accumulated between March 16th and July 31st, we ran into the program.
Move approval.
Over approval. Second. Do we have a motion from Welch, second from Long? Do we have any comments?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 29, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually. And Madam Chair, we do have one member of the public that wishes to comment, Mr. Dave Waddell. I'll go ahead and unmute you, Dave, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi again, everybody. Since we're waiving fees on the utilities. I renewed my driver's license and because, of course, we were shut down, I was charged a $30. Fee by a third-party vendor in order to interact with the county. And then that also happened. When I paid my taxes online and I think that was about 70 bucks. So because I couldn't go down to the tax collector or the DMV, I was out an additional $100. So there's a number of fees out there that were charged to the citizens. I mean, gosh. I could use that 100 bucks because my medication is through the roof and, you know, if I didn't have, it's ironic, if I didn't have insurance, I would qualify to get my medication for free. From every one of the pharmaceutical manufacturers that I have applied. I did that just to see. If that was the case and believe it or not, folks out there that don't have insurance, you can contact the manufacturer. And I would guess in most cases that you could get your medication for free at a very reduced cost. Anything I can do to help. I I don't want to be a pain, but you know. Commissioner Pat Gerard, when you when you told me I get one shot and I love this county. Loving this county takes more than one shot, all right? And I put myself out there and I've gotten veiled threats. I mean. I want everybody to win. We got to come out of this together and we got to come out of this better, all right? And you need to hear that from people, you know, earlier, we cut off public comment. I mean, if I filled out a blue card and I was sitting there and you said, well, everybody, it's 10 o'clock, we got to go home. What do we do? You know, you you really have an opportunity and I know it's inconvenient. It's. Obviously, virtually impossible, as I think Ken Welsh put it, but. Under these circumstances, I found an avenue where it's not virtually impossible because. I'm going to monopolize on any opportunity I get to talk to you folks because I need you. We need you, all right? We need to be able to talk to you so you know why we need you.
Mr. Waddell, your time has expired, sir.
God bless you all. Thank.
Thank you. I believe we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Welch and Commissioner Long.
That's correct.
If there are no. There are no further questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries. Item 30.
This is an amendment number one to a joint project agreement with the city of Largo for utility relocations along Rosemary Road from the Pinellas Trail to Missouri Avenue. The city extended their project limits on additional 1,100 linear feet. Again, we're required to do the utility relocates.
Move approval.
Second.
And we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welsh. Do we have any questions? Comments from the public?
This time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 30, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, it doesn't appear anybody wishes to comment on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you. There are no questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item 31.
These are appointments to the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council and their list for your agenda.
Second.
We have any questions? Comments from the public, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 31, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Seal. Oh, no. Okay.
And there's nobody from the public that wishes to comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion for Commissioner Seal, second from Commissioner Welsh. If there are no questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item 32.
And item 32 is appointments and reappointments to the Emergency Medical Services Medical Control Board.
Second. We have a motion from Commissioner Welsh, second from Commissioner Long. Do we have any questions? Comments from the public, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 32, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And there's nobody that wishes to comment on Agenda Item 32, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Welsh, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item 33.
This is a resolution to adopt a restated plan and amend the cafeteria plan. This really has to do with our healthcare flex spending account and the. Maximum limits that that are applied from federal government and some specific minor language changes.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Entertain a motion. Move approval.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welsh. Do we have any comments, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on the resolution, item number 33, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there's nobody that wishes to comment.
Thank you. Case, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item 34.
Commissioners, under item number 34, this is a resolution that you all adopt every year. This is a request from the tax collector for the county commission to take action to extend. The roles, the tax roles. This is an action that you all need to take so that the tax collector can mail the. Tax bills to citizens prior to the conclusion of the value adjustment board process. So he is asking that you adopt the resolution extending roles.
Thank you. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. We're not done yet. Do we have any comments from the public, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 34, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there are no public comments on this item.
We have a motion from Commissioner Welsh, second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. I think carries unanimously. Item 35.
Under item number 35, I am requesting your approval to file suit against the referenced individuals. This is a code enforcement matter where we have not been able to contain compliance through the local ordinance violation process.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. Madam Attorney, please remind me, do we have to ask for public comment on attorney's items?
You do. Yes.
Okay, because. Okay. Do we have any comments?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 35, please raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, we do have one member of the public that wishes to comment, Mr. Dave Waddell. Dave, I'll go ahead and unmute you and you'll have three minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, folks. While we're waiving fees for other things, but. Yet we're having a fundraiser on code enforcement actions. I don't know, you know, if this is a really blight property or whatnot, but. I think maybe considering the circumstances and people being short on money and maybe sick. May not be able to. Take care of their properties and. Boom, whammy, they get hit with a code violation. Maybe we ought to try and. I don't know, consider working with folks that are under circumstances that are beyond their control financially. I just thought I'd give you that input since we're proceeding with legal actions. It must be something pretty serious. I'm. Sure it isn't because their grass ain't been cut. I hope we haven't come to that, but it's been tough for folks, you know? I haven't had a lot of energy because any energy I have, I give to the cancer patient that I'm trying to help and then me and. My dog, that's my circle, the three of us. So any help you guys can give us would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welsh. If there are no further questions, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item 36.
Under item number 36, similarly, this is a code enforcement action. We are requesting your authority to file suit. Just to give the commissioners a bit more background, when these cases come to you on my agenda, because we're seeking to file. A lawsuit seeking an injunction, these are properties that your code enforcement staff has dealt with quite frequently for a number of years and they typically come to us because of the. Negative adverse impacts that they have on the surrounding properties. So we're asking your authority to file suit here.
Thank you.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Welsh, second from Commissioner Eggers. Do we have any public comment?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 36, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting virtually or hit star nine on the telephone. And Madam Chair, there's no public comment on this item.
Thank you. If there are no questions from the board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. Item carries unanimously. Item. 37, Madam Attorney, do you have anything?
I do not. I have nothing further to report.
Okay, Mr. Administrator.
I have one item to report on, and that's on the Douglas Hackworth property. As you know, this has been discussed and you received a lot of public comment regarding the purchase of this property. As you're also aware, there is a current contract that was executed between the estate and a potential buyer. We have since the last meeting, the estate has reached out. I've heard that the actual buyer is going to reach out to us also. I've had meetings with the city of Dunedin and we actually have another scheduled meeting tomorrow. At the end of the month, we'll be meeting with the estate. There's a number of factors. I want the public to understand that that goes into a purchase of property like this zoning. You know, whether what the density is, what the what the buyer is willing to do, because again, they have a contract on that and there's some limitations in terms. Of what we can do legally when you have contracts for purchase like that. So there's a number of actions that need to occur. The good news is that the the estate. Says that they want to talk. I've heard that the buyer is willing to talk. And certainly the city of Dunedin and the county are willing to discuss, you know, what can be done to preserve this property. So we'll entertain those discussions. We'll have more to do. It will take time. This is not something that's going to be resolved. In one, two, three, four weeks. In fact, the due diligence period isn't even up until the towards the end of October. So we are going to be actively taking steps to engage the different parties to see if there's something that can be done. I will update you as we have progress. But again, you know, the good news is there that there is communication and there's discussion and so more to come on that.
Thank you. Okay. Item 39. We have an MSTU request for feather sound?
No, it's for charity, Madam Chair.
Charity.
It's a MSTU funding request from Charity Community Association for community recreation projects. They would not exceed 15,500 and would provide. Enhancements and replacement equipment for the tennis and pickleball courts.
Move approval, Madam Chair. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welsh. Do we have any questions? Do we have any comments, Brian?
At this time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on Agenda Item 39, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, we do have one member of the public that wishes to comment, Mr. Dave Waddell. Dave, go ahead and unmute and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Thank you. Boy, you're going to get me all talked out. I've been saving up notes here for quite some time. I'm actually wanting to comment on the Douglas property. About a year and a half ago, the county set aside or wanted to set aside 250 acres of environmentally sensitive lands. We don't want to put ourselves in a position like this again. I mean, these developers come in. Secure contract, perform due diligence and well, I'm I'm not going to mention a name again, but we had one come in and. Do soil sampling and didn't even go through the planning department and it was a code enforcement violation. Nothing ever came of it because. I didn't want anything to come of it. All right. It's a very sensitive issue. All right. Now, what we need to do is a grant coordinator. All right. That's what we need is a grant coordinator to find other funding sources. But what concerns me is when years ago. We challenged the county on their plan. The Pinellas Planning Council ruled in our favor and the local planning agency ruled in our favor on two occasions. And I'll be darned if the board didn't turn around and unanimously vote. To move forward. Now, the amount of staff time that's taken up by this and our tax dollars. So we got staff recommending no and God knows how many tax dollars were spent. And then we have a board that turns around and says, yes. I to this day, I'm still befuddled by this. This goes back over 10 years. There's two board members that are aware, well aware of this, but we have a 700-member organization as well and we fought hard. I mean, we fought hard. And we're known as, well, I'm not going to mention that either because these developers are sniffing around right now, but let me remind you. The foreclosure, right now, we're down to about a 30-day supply of homes, right? In real estate, a healthy market says six months of supply. With the potential foreclosures that are coming up, we're probably looking at a year and a half to a two-year supply of homes. Because people have lost their jobs and didn't get money to pay the mortgage. So we're going to have plenty of homes for sale here and of course, that'll reset. And of course, that'll reset the tax base and the assessment on that property. So hopefully, that'll give us a shot in the arm.
Mr. Waddell, your time has expired, sir.
But let's find some funding sources. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a vote on item 39. We have a motion from Commissioner Long, second from Commissioner Welch. All in favor, please raise your hand. Item passes unanimously, item 40.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I just, this is my appointment to the Feather Sound Services District. And before I make that appeal to you all, I just really wanted to thank Susan Hebert for her years of service on that board. She's, she's been a great leader, and the tenure, the time that she's put in, there was much appreciated. And, and she and her husband, Jack, have moved to a different area of our area. They're staying in the region, but they moved somewhere else, and she had to step down. But I just really want to take the opportunity to thank her and, and then, and then at the same time, put Adam Shelton's names forward to replace her on that board. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's my motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Egger, second from Commissioner Justice. Do we have any comments, Brian?
This time, if there are any members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item 40, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's no public comment on agenda item 40.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Not all in favor, please raise your hand. Posed. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, 41. Commissioner Peters.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We talked about this at the workshop. It's the resolution for the Youth Advisory Council, and it clarifies language in the resolution that was established when the act was created, and it also extends the term of their appointment to the committee so they can continue working throughout the summer. I've asked Ashley, since she helped draft the resolution, if you had any questions, she could be allowed to speak and answer your questions.
I just have one question. So will the people, will the people that are on the board one year have to reapply to be on it the next year? Or will it automatically carry over if they don't?
They have to reapply.
They have to reapply every year, so there's a new application period every year? Okay, all right. Any other questions? Motion?
Second.
Move approval.
Oh, well, I'll, I'll take that as a second, Commissioner Long. We have a motion from Commissioner Peters, the second from Commissioner Long. All in favor, please. Oh, sorry. Do we have any comments?
At this time, if there are members of the public that wish to comment on agenda item 41, the resolution, please hit star nine on the telephone or raise your hand virtually in the Zoom meeting. And Madam Chair, there's no public comment on this item.
Okay, in that case, all in favor, please raise your hand. Item carries unanimously, thank you. Do we have any new business items for right now? Commissioner Long.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just thought it was worthwhile to mention to all of my colleagues here, including Barry and Jewel and Brian and Jeanette, who are here, that I sat in on the Water Policy Committee this morning of the Florida Association of Counties, and there was, because I had some recommendations that I had made to them about some things that I thought would be good for us to talk about. I'm going to ask Doyle to send you the three that were my proposals and that we talked about this morning, number one. Number two, there was a very robust discussion about septic tanks, and there was an effort to try and make this motion to the, to the policy committee unanimous on every county, mandated on every county in the state. As you can imagine, there was some pretty strong pushback from the urban counties, especially those of us that are on the coast that are highly populated and especially Pinellas that sits on an aquifer. I was surprised to see that the final vote was a tie. And so they moved the whole discussion to our December meeting, which right now is scheduled to be in Duval. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask Brian Lowack at our next meeting when we have this discussion about septic tanks, or hopefully, we will have a discussion about septic tanks. And I haven't had an opportunity to chat with Barry or Jewel or any of the administrative staff about it. But I do remember quite some time ago, Senator Latval, I had a bill dealing with septic tanks in Pinellas County. And, and I don't, I don't recall any conversations where we've advocated for septic tanks on any new development going on in our county. So I spoke up on behalf of all of you, and I hope I did not misspeak, but I just wanted to put it on your radar so that you knew that it might be something to pay attention to. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Yes, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not really new business, but the, you know, we went to Tallahassee and got money to switch the property in Dunedin from septic to sewer, just, I think, last session. But also, the Florida Legislature passed septic tank reform back in 2000, I believe it was 2010. Senator Constantine, now Commissioner Constantine, was the prime sponsor and leader on that. And then in 2011, I believe that it was repealed under President Gates's Senate leadership. So it'll be interesting to see how that conversation goes. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted you to all be aware of it, and thank you for that history lesson, Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Commissioner Welch.
You're muted, Commissioner Welch.
I'm muted.
I was following Dave. I was looking at Dave, and it automatically muted. Just two quick things. I wanted to first thank the Complete Count Committee. They've done a great job, and again, Josh and Corey for their support work. We are at 65.6% self-response rate, which exceeds our final self-response rate in 2010. We still got through the end of the month. Enumerators are walking around the county right now, so please be responsive if they come to your door. We want to exceed that rate. We are second in the state among large counties. We are less than half a percent behind Duval in Jacksonville. And Pinellas County cannot come in second to Duval County. So we've, we're going to amp it up a little bit. The Rays are going to help us out, and we're going to challenge Mayor Lenny Curry and the council president in Jacksonville. You'll hear more about that in the next day or so. But Pinellas County, we got to finish strong in September. And the last thing, I sent you all an email just after a quick read this morning on the PACE program. The Times did an investigative article on that. And, you know, we tussle with this for quite a while.
Yeah, we did.
I just want to thank our staff, the whole team, but, you know, Don Pearl really was out front, really recommending, recommending some strong consumer protections. And if you read that article, there were some folks that were really harmed because they did not have those consumer protections in other counties. So I just wanted to thank our team for, for their recommendations back when we were looking at PACE. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Right, I think we did the right thing. And thank you for the report on the census. I was going to ask you to. That's great. All right, anybody else? Yes, Commissioner Eggers.
Yeah, just real briefly, thank you, Madam Chair. Yesterday, we had a Forward Pinellas MPO meeting. We had a lot of good discussion. It went a little bit long, but we did talk about a lot of different issues. I did want to bring attention to the fact that there was a lot of discussion about US 19. Specifically, the new project from 580 to Curlew and including the Curlew project, got an update on the funding. It had been pushed back the start of that project to 2022. Still waiting to see how it falls out right now, whether it'll stay in 2022 or because of the revenue conference is meeting as we speak, actually, and they'll be talking more about the estimating of costs for that project as to what, when it's going to move. But we, we talked, and we reaffirmed the importance of having resident crossovers every, no more than every half mile along 19 to, obviously, from a safety issue. One of the problems that we've had are people just crossing 19, having no clue what 70 miles an hour coming at you looks like. And we saw we've had a lot of fatalities along 19. So there was a real good, real good discussion. In addition to that, we discussed that probably in that January, February timeframe that we would be having, convening a kind of US 19 workshop, talking about issues to the south on US 19, but also going further up Tampa Road, and then some of the unique intersection design alternatives for roads going forward. So that was, that's a conversation that we'll be having after the first of the year. But anyway, a lot of good topics yesterday, but that one, I just wanted to focus, let folks know that we are looking at and continue to deal with US 19. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, well, we are in recess until 6 o'clock then. See you later.
Thank you, ma'am.